This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, January 23rd at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Hogue.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Council President Proton Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a call.
Thank you. Please, reminder to turn off your cellphones as well, and please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. This is nice that it's becoming a regular occurrence at our city council meetings. So I'd like to call on our fire chief, Johnny Menefee, and as he gets ready, just want to let the public know that this is our third week swearing in new officers. It's nice that we have officers that are willing to serve and help our residents and our businesses in this wonderful city. And the city council, the mayor administration, we are, we put our full support behind the fire department and the police department to make sure that they have the tools and the training and equipment to do their job. They're always coming, the chief is always coming to us for requests for new equipment to make your jobs easier, to make the lives better of our residents, our citizens, and we're always grateful to help. So, welcome to the city, and Chief, take it away.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. President, council, you know, mayor, city administrator, visitors and friends of Southfield, like and other elected officials. Thank you. But hey, on those words from the council president, I think that's pretty good. That's good. So, just a little change in the agenda of what I have. So normally on the agenda that said I had six individuals to swear in. Today, I had two that had some family emergencies that won't be here this evening. But so I stand before you this evening with one candidate for promotion to captain and three others who sworn firefighters today. I'm gonna have Captain James Bunker. I'm gonna have firefighter, paramedic Jared Emle, firefighter, paramedic Joseph Orlando, and firefighter Arrington Ferguson. So, just start with being promoted to a captain in our department. Now, this is a very competitive testing process that they have to go through. They have a written exam. They also have a five-step assessment center that covers in-and-out basket. They have oral presentations, scenarios, and then we waited with some seniority from lieutenant on back of that. And it, all that's compiled, it goes on, it goes on a list. And so it's a very competitive, rigorous time to become promoted in the department. And, you know, it's not uncommon for a person to score a 90% on our testing process and actually not get promoted. So it is quite an honor to become a command officer in our, in our, in our department. As far as for the three individuals that sworn in as firefighters today, they have a year worth of probation of learning the right way to do things, the Southfield way. They've learned how to properly ventilate, how to properly search and rescue a fire, how to properly lay the proper hose line, the medical aspect, how to drive a life truck and a fire truck, as well as pumping with these sometimes million-dollar pieces of apparatus. And I'm happy to say that the promoted and the firefighters have not only met our expectations but exceeded. They have been evaluated from their peers, from their officers, from the command staff, and myself. And so I'm happy to bring forth these individuals to be sworn in this evening. I'm gonna start with Captain James Bunker. Badge number 268. It's important, I think, that you hear their badge numbers because it's kind of how long they've been here. We don't recycle the badge numbers. It's the individual's badge number for life. So he was, he came to the department in '03, swore, he was, became a paramedic in '05, became a lieutenant in 2018. Please, Captain. Captain, what's your badge number, Miller?
291.
He's pinning him today. Our senior captain.
Chief, before you go to the next one, if there's any family members who want to come up and take pictures, you're more than welcome to come up. Don't be shy.
Thank you. Let's have firefighter, paramedic Jared Emle. Badge number 339. We're happy to get him from Birmingham Fire Department. Let's have firefighter, paramedic Joseph Orlando. Badge number 341. We were able to get him from MedStar, a private EMS company. And last but not least, firefighter Arrington Ferguson. Badge number 347. His dad's retired from the Sterling Heights Fire Department. For this time, I'd like the city clerk to properly swear the, these new firefighters and captain.
Give me Cruz's signature.
Mayor. Give me Cruz's signature.
Oh, okay. Oh. Absolutely.
You go first.
I go first. First time. I want to, I want to, I want to thank everyone for allowing us to do this. I know this is our third time. We're getting caught up from COVID and properly honoring these firefighters and the sacrifices and the service that they're making, this lifelong commitment to this great city. I'd like to thank council, the citizens, city administrator, for always backing us. You know, as you said, I bring up quite a few things here that council and the city has approved to help move the, be progressive in the fire department. So I really do appreciate that. I have to give special thanks to our human resources department that helped us vet the best candidates for this great city, as well as the police department who does a very thorough background in making sure that we're getting the type of individuals we need to help, to help serve this city. And to the captain and to the firefighters. Here, I can, this is the only part of the things that's kind of, you know, your career goes pretty fast. And I remember when captain was, you know, on probation in the department. I look at him and follow him. It's, it's so funny, his, his, I was his dad's probing. And it, so it's pretty funny to see how this, how this kind of follows. But, you know, do as much as you can, not as little as you can get away with, right? Just, don't give back, just give. You know, you have an opportunity to, to make a real impact here. I can't thank you enough for giving your life to service, to want to serve others and serve the citizens of this great city. You know, it means a lot and shows a lot about your character and where you're, where you're going. You know, I'm gonna expect a lot from you, expect a lot from the captain and the step up when the battalion chief is not, is not there. So for that, I, you know, I commend you. But everything depends on you, where you're going, what you want to do in this department, it's all with you. All we can do is we, we try to provide the, the training, the equipment, everything we have to provide for you to do the job you do. But it's truly up to you and where you want to go. I want you fulfilled personally and professionally on this job, and it's really up to you, but I hope you choose that. For the families, I want to thank you for raising and being a part of these individuals' lives that they, that helped them serve and serve in this way of, of this city. You know, but I can't do it alone, you know, especially the captain. He's gonna be mentally tired, more than physically tired in his, in his new position. And the fire, and the firefighters, they're, they're not gonna always have good days. They're gonna have some bad days. But it's up to you to help watch them, and if you need, contact us so we can make sure that they're getting the help and the treatment they need if, if they see something that is, is difficult. So I want to thank you again for raising them the right way and letting them be a part of our, our great city. I give you my pledge. I promise to take care of them. I can't see, I'm gonna return them the way you gave, gave them to me. They're gonna see a lot. But we're gonna return them the best way we can, but we're gonna do our best to provide the, the things that they need to be able to get the job done. So I really thank you, also, family. And on that, I think with the department, we're all caught up on our probation. So I, I want to thank you again for allowing us to do this and, and, thank you.
Yeah, Chief, I know you mentioned, do we have three individuals from other cities that came with us this time?
Yes, actually, and even the couple of individuals that were not here, we were actually able to give to the, get from other, other departments and so forth. So yeah, I mean, it makes a difference. The, I think the, it's good that we've never laid off a firefighter in our history and our, and our benefits and so far at a, at a point that this is a destination spot. This is not a department that people want to jump around from. And then how progressive we are and the things that we're doing from our new training center to, to the new, all the new apparatus that we, we bought and the things that we're, that we're actually getting into. So, yes.
Okay, that's, that's excellent, and that's one of the reasons council has been 100% supportive. And I, I know, one of, I've been attending these for, since I've been on council. I remember once we got a young man from Georgia. And so, but anyway, did, did you mention that the captain, he was, he was a lieutenant at 19?
No, in 2018. He was, he became a lieutenant in 2018.
Okay, okay. I knew, I knew we had a good management development program, but I didn't know it was that, that significant.
Yeah, second generation, his dad's badge number is 120. That was my battalion chief.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad to see new faces, and we, I went on a ride along years ago, and I learned right then and there that this is a young man's game, being a firefighter. So, but, but obviously, we need all kind of development and management and training, so, but I'm glad to see we have an influx of younger generations. And the council is fully supportive of that.
Yeah, if I remember, you were really good luck. We didn't catch a run when you were there. We didn't catch a run when you were there, so you were, you were good luck. You should come back and ride with us.
Okay, all right. Well, that day.
Oh, no, it was, it was, it was.
It was me.
It was you.
I just sat around the station waiting for something to do.
Yeah, I was so lucky. I left at nine o'clock that morning.
And you didn't come back.
And the chief had to come get me because I need to leave at one. So we headed back to the station, and we turned right back around the middle of the street, going to another call. And the last one I was on was a heart attack victim, and the chief had to come get me because they couldn't, you know, he, they were there working. And I had a standing engagement, but Chief Barry White came to get me and took me, so, but I was busy. I saw, that's where I learned how busy you guys are and how appreciative I am of the hard work. And believe me, everyone that we picked up that day, I think about three, three rather four, all the, the customers, they were glad to see the Southfield Fire Department there. So I talked enough. Thank you, Chief.
Well, I'm glad you got a chance. I sat there with the firefighters in Station One, probably three hours, waiting for something, and then I left, and then they got a run, so. I guess, I guess I'm, was it, we said it was good luck, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're coming back, right?
Chief, are you still accepting applications for firefighters?
Yes, we are. We're, just with retirements that we have coming up, we're, right now, we, we're gonna lose five by the end of the year.
Okay. So to, you know, to the public out there, listening, watching on cable and the audience, if you know anyone looking to, to have an exciting career in the Southfield Fire Department, go to our website and, and apply. So, council, any other comments? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I have an appointment that I'm looking for your approval on this evening, and I'd like to ask Paul Heisman from Morelli to come forward. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, standing to my left is Paul Heisman. I'm recommending his appointment to the city center advisory board. Since Morelli moved to Southfield, I think, two years now, during the pandemic and occupied the former federal mogul building, bringing in roughly 500 employees, they are part of, the company is part of the city center advisory, or city center district. And Gene Spector, who was the original administrator, the chief for that North American office, has moved on to something else within Morelli, and so I'm asking you to approve of Mr. Heisman's appointment so that Morelli continues to be represented on the city center advisory board. So I'm looking for a motion, if you're so inclined.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the appointment to the city center advisory board of Mr. Paul E. Heisman?
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, for the appointment to the city center advisory board of Paul Heisman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. If you'd like to say a word or two, introduce yourself further.
Yeah, so, good evening. As was mentioned, my name is Paul Heisman. You'll probably tell by my accent that I'm not originally from the United States, so I was originally an English citizen. But as of last year, I'm very proud to say that I'm now a US citizen and recently joined Morelli to succeed Mr. Spector that you mentioned. And I'm looking forward to being able to make a valuable contribution in this city. Morelli has a big presence and, I hope, a growing presence in this city, and we look forward to being able to contribute. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Not necessarily right now.
Huh?
We can do, we can arrange for that. I'm not prepared for that. I was, I didn't have to bring anything for that.
You need to be sworn in as the commissioner of gratitude another day.
Okay.
You'll be in at 8:30 in the morning on February 14th.
14.
Okay.
Okay, that's a problem.
Yeah.
I won't be, I won't be able to make that day.
All right, well, we'll have another time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have communications. We have not had anyone sign up for communications.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I came in at 5:55. Your sheet was already gone. It should be there at least at 6 o'clock.
Just please state your name for the, for the record.
Joseph Person. Mr. President, mayor, madam city clerk. I, I come, I have a concern, you know, this issue about the city clerk holding down a job until November, until if somebody is going to run for the job, it needs to be put out to the community. Not only an ad and say the sun paper that we use, as well as it needs to be on Channel 15 so that the people of Southfield will know that if the position is gonna, if somebody is going to run for it, they need to know what's going on, instead of what I'm hearing on the ground, that the city council is talking about appointing the new city clerk as well as the treasurer. The people of Southfield deserve just the truth. If you choose to do this, just tell us. Don't hide it from us. Don't say, well, it's coming out, the city council hasn't made a decision on it or anything. Because what usually happens, April 26th is the date that if you're running for this position, this term, the rest of this term, from the immediate past city clerk Sharika Hawkins, you have to have your, your signatures in by April 26th. That needs to go out so that everybody can know it. And this issue of where if the city council decides again to take away outright, let the people decide. Troy doesn't have, doesn't appoint, if I'm correct, city clerk. A lot of the other places don't appoint city clerks or treasurers. Smaller cities do, but let the citizens of Southfield decide and do it openly, not behind closed doors or you hear it through the grapevine. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not have a chance to sign up for communications? Okay, thank you. Next, we have presentations, and we'll start with presentations for joint resolutions.
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Roberta Cotman to join me at the podium. And good evening once again. As we discussed, Ms. Cotman, would you join me? As we discussed at the last meeting, that this evening, we have two joint resolutions. First, I will present the mayor and council resolution declaring February the 1st through 28th, 2023 is African-American History Month. And then we have a resolution regarding Rosa Parks Day in the city of Southfield. So, whereas National African-American History Month, celebrated in February, has origins in 1915, when Dr. Carter, G. Woodson, historian and author, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life in America. This organization is also known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. Whereas, originally, African-American History Month was a week in February that included the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African-Americans. And in 1976, the week was expanded to a month-long celebration that honors the contributions and achievements that African-Americans have made to our nation's life and culture. And whereas in 1986, Congress passed Public Law 99-244, which designated February as National Black or African-American History Month, and President Reagan issued a proclamation calling for all people of the country to observe Black History Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas, respectively, every president since has issued a proclamation encouraging all Americans to recognize the importance of this month. And whereas, the theme for the 2023 African-American History Month celebration is Black Resistance, exploring how African-Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms. And whereas, the city of Southfield will host many activities in observation of African-American History Month, including a new art exhibit in the lobby featuring three local African-American artists. And further, the Southfield Public Library has planned a series of programs, including Black History Mysteries, African-American Patriot Soldiers of the American Revolution, and 25 colorful black women. And additionally, Parks and Recreation Department has a myriad of offerings, including Black History Month activity bags for kids, Black History 101 Mobile Museum, Black-owned business marketplace, conversations and cocktails, a walk-through history, which will begin on the front lawn, featuring famous African-Americans, and the Secret Society of Twisted Storytellers, and a number of other activities. Now, therefore be it resolved, the mayor and city council, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 28th, 2023 as African-American History Month in the city of Southfield, and ask everyone to join us in honoring the contributions and achievements of African-Americans, recognizing their central role in the United States' history. And it is dated the 23rd of January, 2023, and bears our signatures.
Counsel? Councilman Cruz?
Yep. Just one quick question. In that proclamation, why do we put a year on it versus making February the month?
Well, we do it every year, so I can. Well, we do it every year, so I can...
I'm trying to, why do we have to do it every year?
Whatever the council pleasure is.
Okay. And that is, and you're right. I'm just asking a question because it's, well, if we're going to recognize this, let's recognize it and let it be. But if...
Well, we can make it in perpetuity.
But it is, but then again, it is still nice to, you know, revisit it and everything. I just don't, I don't want to get lost one day. And say, "Oh, well, we didn't do it this year." It's not African-American History Month anymore. That's, that's all I have, but otherwise...
Well, sometimes, Councilman Cruz, I'm asked, what is the city doing in observance of Black History Month? So...
Yeah. I understand.
We take this opportunity to promote the Art Commission, the Parks and Rec, the library, and so on. And of course, that can be done other ways. I hear your, your point.
No problem.
Would you like to make that motion?
No, we can leave it like it is. I'm sure we'll be back every month.
And Council President, I need a motion for adoption.
Oh, I might as well make it there. I move that we approve the joint resolution making African-American History Month February first through twenty-eight, 2023.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve the joint resolution of African-American History Month for February 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. And we're declaring a special day in February, February fourth, as Rosa Parks Day in the city of Southfield. This will be her one-hundred-and-tenth birthday. And this also is a joint resolution. So whereas, Rosa Louise McCauley, born to James and Leona McCauley on February fourth, 1913, in Tuskegee, Alabama. Early on, Rosa, her younger brother and their mother moved to Pine Level, Alabama. And whereas, in 1932, at the age of nineteen, Rosa married Raymond Parks, a barber and civil rights activist, who was encouraged, who encouraged her to return to high school and earn her diploma. Whereas, on December first, 1955, Rosa and other black passengers on a bus in Montgomery, Alabama, were asked to give up their seats for the white passengers who were standing. She refused and subsequently was arrested and fined ten dollars for the offense and four dollars in court costs, neither of which she paid. And whereas, the Montgomery NAACP appealed the conviction and thus challenged legal segregation in Alabama. On December fifth, 1956, the Montgomery Improvement Association, led by the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., organized a boycott of the municipal bus company. And I think we know what happened from there. Whereas, on November thirteenth, 1956, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld a lower court's decision declaring Montgomery's segregated bus seating unconstitutional. And a court order to integrate the buses was served on December twentieth, 1956. The boycott ended the following day. And whereas, in her role in igniting a successful campaign, Rosa Parks became known as the mother of the civil rights movement. Now, therefore be it resolved that as, that we, as the Mayor and Council, City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize February fourth, 2023, as the one-hundred-and-tenth birthday of Rosa Parks and declare this Rosa Parks Day in the city of Southfield. And we encourage all citizens to join in this remembrance of her. And it's dated today and signed by myself and the members of the council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve this resolution to honor and observe February fourth, 2023, as Rosa Parks' day, one-hundred-and-tenth birthday.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the joint resolution of February fourth as Rosa Parks' day, as it is her one-hundred-and-tenth birthday. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Standing next to me is a distinguished resident that all of you are well familiar with. So this is Roberta Cotman. And did you want to say a word? Ms. Cotman, I present these to you.
Thank you very much. And now, Rosa Parks and the Reverend, the Reverend, Reverend, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and a special tribute to Daniel Brightwell, who went to Morehouse College. Today's mantra is, create a culture of peace and non-violence for the children of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Kyle Lopez from the Martin Luther King Jr. Task Force.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Madam Clerk, Mayor, and citizens of Southfield. I come to you today as the first Vice President of MLK Task Force Incorporated to present Mr. Daniel Brightwell with an award, as well as a plaque. Before I jump into reading these, just want to say that in the number of years that I've known Dan, working with him on MLK Task Force, rock solid. A financial genius. And there was one incident, we were down in, I believe it was in Atlanta. We had about forty kids with us on a, on our Freedom Ride, kind of college tour. And we were on the phone with Dan frequently, trying to get money, finance, and make sure the kids had enough food, you know. And Dan was on the phone every five minutes with us, you know, all times of the night. And we were in another state, so the hours kind of fluctuated, you know. But beyond that, working with him on MLK, always on point, always there to serve, an honorable individual. So today is an honor for me to present this certificate of appreciation to Daniel Brightwell. Thank you for your selfless devotion and devoting your time and support to the MLK Junior Task Force Incorporated. If I had come to you or not, I didn't know. And we also like to present him with a plaque as well. Selfless individual, devoted, rock-solid pillar of the community.
I want to, first of all, just say, I believe in the mission of the MLK Task Force. And everything I've done for the MLK Task Force has been out of my belief in that mission and the compassion that they bring to the table with respect to doing things that MLK Martin Luther King stood for, MLK stood for. And Kyle, you brought up a good memory. In my household, when you guys were out of town, there are people in my household that, "How much are they paying you?" Because I think I was running to Western Union almost on a daily basis, fund, funding money to the individual, to Kyle, I think Roger, and our Pat, Pat, at the time, our president. So, but it, it's a level of, when you enjoy something that you're doing, it's not work. So I didn't necessarily, it didn't bother me. But I just wanted to make sure we did what we could to, to, to further the mission of MLK and also further the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I really, I'm really surprised I got this award. They, they gave it to me at the celebration Monday by, and I was surprised. And it was a clandestine surprise because I was, in essence, trying to collect signatures. And I got the buzz that was going on. Everybody's, "Where's Dan? Where's Dan?" Because they wanted to make sure I was there toward the end. And a young lady called me on my cell phone and said, "Dan, where are you?" And I said, "I'm here, you know, trying to get some signatures." She said, "Well, don't leave until you call me. I got something for you." And so I didn't, I thought, I thought she had some signatures or something. But it turned out that was the conversation, that was the conversation among the MLK Task Force members. Keep track of Dan. Don't let him slip out. And so I'm, I'm, you know, I love this organization. I've been with it. And, and, but, but like I said, the mission of the group is fantastic. And we got a young cadre of leaders in the group and has taken the mission forward. And Kyle, just thank you again, man.
Thanks, please, sir. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. President? Yes.
I just want to thank, congratulate you, Councilman Brightwell. I know as a Morehouse graduate, you're a great representation of a Morehouse man. Congratulations again.
I'm, I'm ready to retire now.
All right, thank you. Next, we have two sets of minutes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll make, I'll move that we accept for...
Approve.
Approve the regular meeting minutes of November first, 2022. You want them separate or together?
We can do them together.
Okay. And the regular meeting minutes of November fourteenth, 2022.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve the regular meeting minutes of November first, 2022 and November fourteenth, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have nothing under consent. We have our public hearings and site plans. Mr. Crowe?
Good evening. I'd like to introduce PSLU twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-five and the accompanying site plan PSP twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-nine. Petitioners, Mr. Nicholas Shango. Parcel's located at two-eight-seven-nine-nine Northwestern Highway, located on the south side of Northwestern Highway between Franklin and West Twelve Mile Road. Existing zoning is B-three general business. Special land use request is to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through. And the site plan review request, the demolition of a portion of the existing building and conversion to approximately thirty-four-hundred gross square feet, retail center with restaurant and drive-through. This is the existing conditions. The shopping center office building is in poor condition and underutilized. You can see the street view here and the rear. The site is currently Zone B-three and land use is regional mixed use. Mr. Shango has successfully taken a portion of an existing office building converted into Dunkin' Donuts. He'd like to do similar by removing about a third of the existing structure to create a drive-through lane for a proposed smoothie restaurant. Here's the close-up of the site plan. Some layout of the three storefronts with landscaping. Clean Juice is the brand that is being proposed for the drive-through. And this is an interior shot of the remodeling. And then there's a future tenant mix. Three total tenants with some outdoor seating. With that, Mr. Shango, do you want to come up and just give a brief overview of what your proposed project is? Then Council will open the public hearing and if you can stick around for any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Nick Shango. Two-eight-seven-nine-nine Northwestern Highway. I used to lease from this location. I was a Dunkin' operator, Dunkin' Basket, for almost fifteen years. So we owned the building next door. So I actually moved my store next door, cut the building, and we created the same, the same situation. We have an office in the back and retail in the front. So we're just cutting enough to be able to squeeze the drive-through in. Is there any questions I can answer?
We'll have questions shortly.
Sure.
So if you want to have a seat, we'll open... So I'll open the public hearing for PSLU two-two-zero-zero-five, a special use request of Nicholas Shango for the conversion of the existing shopping center at two-eight-seven-nine-nine Northwestern Highway. Okay, seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Shango, before, Council, could you just tell, Council, your hours of operation and if you know what the other two tenants are?
Sure. As of right now, it would be six or seven a.m. We would close at eight. And I...
Is that seven days a week or...?
That would be seven days, yeah. Probably Sundays a little bit later. But we would, we would definitely run it by you when we get another tenant. And we have potentially the Domino's at Pizza.
If I could to counsel, this is the time we set the hours of operation. So if you, if you want to go large as far as what you think your potential hours are so you don't have to come back?
Right. It's definitely not going to be twenty-four hours, right? So that's, it's not going to be twenty-four hours. Neither are any of my tenants. So I just don't want to...
Is it eleven p.m. or midnight?
That'd be fine. Let's, let's...
So six a.m. to midnight?
Midnight, let's say that, yeah. That would work.
Seven days a week? Just because that's how they'll prove it with...
Yeah.
You can go less than that. But if you, if you want to go more, you tap gun pack.
We'll do six to twelve. And any, any other tenant is going to open later than us. We would probably be the first tenant to open. So that works.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Without giving out any confidential information, what is your anticipated volume of customers per, per daily or weekly, whatever the number you had come up with?
So being in the coffee business all those years, I would get four or five hundred a day. Here, they're a very young brand. They have two hundred stores. And we anticipate seventy to eighty customers a day.
Okay, all right. And they, during those hours, six to twelve, seventy to eighty, do you survive on that?
Yeah, they have a very high ticket. It's, it's a organic juice bar. So everything's organic there. The food, anything you buy is organic. The juice, cold-pressed, they have... But we would be, we'd be closing at eight o'clock.
So Mr. Brightwell, you would be approving from the time span of six a.m. to midnight, but an individual store may have shorter hours. The juice store would close at eight p.m. Just, just so that Mr. Shango would not have to come back should a Domino's or some pizza that wants to be open till eleven or, or midnight.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. Are you anticipating putting a recreational marijuana in your stores?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I have a question for the planner. Seems to me that some time ago, people came to the microphone and wanted to put drive-throughs on end caps. And you were very negative about that. And I think one of them was right up on Telegraph Road And I think one of them was right up on Telegraph Road, um, where the coffee places.
Well, Mr. Frazier, what, we have current standards to allow for drive-through and end caps if, um, if it had three or more retail operations. So when I was opposed to it in, in the past, it was because they had two or, or fewer. It didn't, it didn't meet with the regulations. Then we changed the regulations to allow for drive-through as a special land use. And that's why this gentleman can come forward with a three-tenant store with a drive-through. So it was the, it was, it was the older language that prevented us from supporting drive-throughs if it didn't meet certain standards.
Is that your standard now is three?
I believe our standard is just drive-throughs have to have a special land use. There's no limit, there's no limit on the number of stores. It just, there was, there was only, there was some very narrow language that allowed drive-throughs. Some freestanding drive-throughs could be permitted by right without the special land use. Because of the parking, traffic circulation, so forth, we made all drive-throughs as a special land use approval. So it, it, we updated the ordinance to allow more flexibility for drive-throughs. But the council has control because it requires special land use approval.
Okay. I guess if I was one of the previous developers that came and wanted to put a, a drive-through on an end cap and you had turned, you had discouraged me from doing it, I would be pretty upset.
Well, again, I think what council did was adapt to, to the times because the older ordinance language prohibited drive-throughs unless it was an end cap with four or more tenants. So this is greater flexibility now for developers.
Well, one of the things that study after study, excuse me for having another side conversation while you're at the microphone, but...
It's okay.
Leads into what you're, what you're doing. Seems to me study after study says that more people, uh, use drive-throughs than go in and sit down in a restaurant and eat. So, um, I think as a city, we need to look, be forward-looking so that we're ahead of the game rather than playing catch-up.
And I agree with you. And also, we, we learned a lot with the pandemic that the stores that were more successful during the pandemic had drive-throughs. So we, we constantly try to evolve. Again, I inherited an ordinance that said a drive-through is only allowed under certain conditions. I think we're much more flexible about drive-throughs nowadays. We also encourage walk-up windows.
Also, you encourage what?
Walk-up windows.
Oh, okay. I have no more questions for the developer.
Thank you. Councilman Hoag?
Yeah, I just have a quick question or two. It indicates it's next to existing Dunkin' Drive-Thru. Is that where the Baskin-Robbins is? And then it's that next parcel of land?
Yeah, I own, I own both of those properties.
Okay.
So I'm really comfortable with this tree. I've been there many years.
And we, and per the drawing, your drive-through is going to be able to house 10 cars if it's full? Because the, the Baskin-Robbins, um, which I frequent it, I, I like it. I just think it's a little tight, oh, oh.
The Baskin-Robbins, it's another, it's next door.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm glad to see that your drive-through is a lot bigger than that particular location. And did I hear you say you do have tenants already or no?
I have, uh, I have two, myself and, uh, you know, the pizza. And then, you know, it could be just two. You know, it depends, you know, who comes. Sometimes they want more square, square footage.
Did you say pizza?
Yeah, pizza, yeah. So, um, you know, as, as far as the traffic, it's, uh, it's a quarter of what I was getting in the, in the Dunkin'. I've recently sold my Dunkin'. I still own the property. So, you know, we get a 400 or 500 cars a day. I, you know, everybody operates at a different speed. I operate in two, two and a half minutes. But, you know, nowadays, you know, they have mobile orders. When, what you're going to find is a lot of people place their order and they just come pick it up. You know, so it's, it's faster to get them out, you know, and we can always pull them around. I used to do that a lot. I used to pull them around into my parking lot if they had a big order.
Not often. I'm not saying it's often. It's just that, that's a busy street. So I was glad to see that you have more capacity for a drive-in.
You got it.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. To the planner, I'm having a hard time visualizing where this is. Can you pull the map up again?
So Northwestern Highway is to the top and Franklin is on the south side of the slider, the bottom. Is that correct, Nick? Nick, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, yes, correct.
Maybe you went to the one with the, the street view.
So there's, there's Franklin, Northwestern Highway. That's the larger area. And right to the, um, right of the slide, looking at it, is the, your existing Dunkin' Donut or your former Dunkin' Donut.
Correct.
Baskin-Robbins. And then you wanted this one here?
Yeah.
That's sometimes easier to, to visualize.
We'd be cutting out that, that, all the way to the right next to that cleaner sign, that'd be getting cut out to allow a car to come in and weave around the building. Because right now, it's, it's touching the property line.
And that building's facing Northwestern. Look, we're looking at the frontage that's facing Northwestern. The rear part of the building is facing Franklin.
So the cleaners, so is that next to the, I'm, to the left of that, is that where the, um...
Right, Nick, to the left is your Dunkin' Donut and to the right is the other plaza?
I thought the Dunkin' Donut was across the street.
I'm sorry.
The Dunkin' Donut was across the street along with the Baskin-Robbins.
It's right, it's right next door. If you're looking at that picture, it's to your left, right next door. You literally walk next door, it's there.
Okay, I guess I'm just drawing a blank. I, I don't know in the future if we could have a larger map of the area because that map's not helping me. It's like...
Right here is the, uh, right, that's your Baskin-Robbins Dunkin' Donut.
Yeah, this is the Dunkin', yep. So to the, to the right of that Dunkin', there's a gas station. It's right in the corner of Franklin and, and North, Northwestern Highway.
Where's the gas station that we approved on this? I wish I had a, a larger plan because we just approved a gas station in this area, correct?
Correct. It's further down to your right.
This way? It's on the other side here. So here, here's the existing gas station. The one you just approved is right across the street here on this corner.
Just make up the zone.
No.
No.
Right here is where that gas station was approved. That's the existing gas station.
And that's the one that we approved that they're renovating?
Right here.
I, I'm sorry, I can't see...
On this corner.
I can't see right...
All the way to the end of the, of the map.
Over there. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's existing. This is the one that they're, they're doing the tear-down and build the new one with the mur, the mural and the E.V. charging stations. That's right here.
Okay. All right. It's, all right. I got words, yeah. Thank you.
I think years ago that Dunkin', Dunkin', I think years ago that Dunkin' Donuts used to be a kosher one. Isn't that right?
The, the, many, many years ago.
Pardon me?
Many years ago, it's the one, it's this building that they just showed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they did some remodeling because we went down there for a ribbon cutting about five years ago, five, six years ago, maybe longer.
And it wasn't, yeah, and it wasn't though.
No, it wasn't.
Right.
At that time.
Right. Mayor Seiver?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Nick and his father, Mike. This is the second building, tired, dated building that they've taken over, invested in. I had a, um, uh, business, dealings with a business that was in the office building and where the, he split the building and became Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin-Robbins. And, you know, just changed the, the whole place. And so now he's going a little farther north. But, um, I appreciate, Nick, your belief in Southfield and continuing to take dated, uh, structures and giving them new life. So thank you.
Thank you. That's my pleasure. Thank you.
So through the chair, if there's no other questions, we have a recommended, um, resolution with conditions. And the only change would be on the hours of operation shall be limited to 6:00 a.m. to midnight. So we would recommend favorable approval subject to these conditions with the noted change.
Council? Councilman Banks?
I moved that the special use request of Nicholas Shango be approved to allow for the conversion of an existing shopping center to include a restaurant with drive-through and two additional tenant spaces on property located at 28799 Northwestern Highway. Hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to midnight.
Thank you.
And also to include the various conditions as outlined in the resolution.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, to approve PSLU 22-0005, special use request with the recommended resolution by the city planner with the one exception of changing hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And through the chair, our next item would be if there's any questions specifically on the site plan. But we also make a favorable recommendation subject to the conditions as listed on, on, in your packet and on the slide.
Does council have any questions on site plan? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan review request of Nicholas Shango to convert the existing vacant retail center to a restaurant with drive-through and two additional retail spaces on property located at 28799 Northwestern Highway as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve PSP 22-0009 site plan review request as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome to the city for continued work in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, our, our next public hearing is dealing with PZR 22-0002, which is a rezoning request of Savvy Sliders on behalf of the owner, Nadar Property Investment, to rezone 1.07 acres of land from I-1 Industrial to B3 General Business on property located at 22650 West 8 Mile Road. There's a accompanying, um, special land use if the rezoning gets approved as well as a site plan. PSLU 22-0006 is a special land use case and PSP 22-0010 is the site plan. Again, the petitioner is Savvy Sliders, uh, 26, 22650 West 8 Mile Road. Existing zoning is I-1 Industrial with request to rezone to B3 General Business. This was a former Taco Bell located adjacent to Sam's Club. Special use requests will allow for a restaurant with drive-through. Site plan review requests for the conversion of the existing building to Savvy Sliders Restaurant with Drive-Thru. Just to give council some comfort, B3, which does allow marijuana uses, this property is excluded from that because it doesn't have, it doesn't meet the setbacks from residential, which is located 226 feet away. With that, again, this is the former Taco Bell located on 8 Mile adjacent to Sam's Club. It has the, uh, former prototype Taco Bell facade. The site is currently Zoned I-1 Industrial. The last, uh, master plan does support regional mixed use. This is the site plan for the changes. Additional landscaping will be added to the site. Floor plan. One of the things that Savvy Slider does and have been doing throughout the region is adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So this will not be a tear-down redo. They'll take the existing facade and, and convert it into, um, a unique Savvy Sliders, but following the branding of, of the colors. There's a few photos of the interior. And before we go to public hearing, I believe the applicant is here if you'd like to say a few words. And then they'll have the public hearing and then please be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Robert Kerma and I'm here representing the property owner as well as Savvy Sliders. We're just asking that we be able to use this property as it was originally designed and built. The Taco Bell was 20-plus years. And unfortunately, the zoning changed, not allowing, uh, drive-throughs in a industrial. Place has been closed for a little bit over a year, so that's why we're here right now. We're looking at going in, repairing, replacing, whatever needs to be done on the outside, improving the looks, painting, and updating the landscaping as well as increasing the drive-through lane to allow for, for a bypass lane, which will also allow for, um, fire, uh, fire access through the site. So we're asking that, uh, that we can move forward with this.
Through the chair, we actually have two separate public hearings and then the site plan. The first public hearing is strictly dealing with consideration of going from I-1 Industrial to B3. And again, I believe this store was an existing non-conforming use in the industrial. It has ceased to exist for over a year. This will make that site conforming. And again, there, um, this does, is not eligible for any marijuana uses in the B3 because of the separation requirements.
Okay. Thank you. If you have a seat, we'll open, we will, uh, open the public hearing for PZR 22-0002 to rezone, uh, a rezoning request of Savvy Sliders at 22650 West 8 Mile from I-1 Industrial to B3 General Business. If anyone would like to speak, please come up to the microphone. You have three minutes. All right. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed.
Unless there's any specific questions on the rezoning, we still have the special land use and site plan. We are making a favorable recommendation on PZR 22-0002, subject to the conditions above, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on the rezoning itself.
Councilwoman Banks?
Was this properly advertised? I don't see a public hearing notice here.
It, it was advertised as, as a rezoning.
It's in there.
Okay. Um, this, this packet, at least for me, is not flowing very smoothly. I know you said you've got like two public hearings here. Is there a way that you can, the clerk and the planner can work together to separate the items so when we try to go from one to another, we can see?
Yes, so actually, the clerk and myself discussed that earlier today. But we do have item C, D, and E are all related to the same, um, case. And in the past, we used to have to, we had the public hearings up here and then we had the site plans and we were constantly jumping back and forth. Again, we'll, we'll do whatever the council's pleasure. We thought that by grouping the three related cases together, it'd be easier. Madam Clerk and myself did talk about maybe bolding the public hearing portions versus the site plan for, for better. But this is our attempt to, to try to group similar items together in a sequential order, rezoning first, special land use next, and then site plan third.
Well, I can only speak for myself. I find it very confusing. Like I'm even trying to find the marijuana. You said it was, is it written in here? I'm scrolling up and down. I can't even find it because there's like no order here. Is that written on one of the pages?
As far as...
You said that marijuana is prohibited at the location.
Right. That question was asked of me earlier because of the B3 zoning. And I was just, I was just qualifying to counsel that this would not be eligible for a marijuana use.
Right. But is that listed?
Well, the, 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 in your package should be the list of permitted and special land uses under B3. I know there's always a concern when we go to B3 whether or not a site would qualify for marijuana. So I was just explaining that it's not written down in the, in the agenda.
It's, it's not in there? It's not in there. Terry said he was asked earlier, so he was just answering that question. It does, it's not in there because it just doesn't qualify because it's too close to a residential neighborhood.
Okay, but don't you think it should be listed in there that it does not qualify because it is too close to a residential neighborhood?
We can, we can add it.
Yeah, add it. Okay, that's what I mean.
We can always add that as one of the... We can always add that as one of the.
And again, through the chair, when we advertise, we have to be 21 days out.
Correct.
And you just recently approved the zoning tax. It's going to be enacted tonight, so it's officially not on the books yet. I did receive a call earlier today in my office, and that's why I wanted to clarify tonight.
But we can still add it as one of the conditions. There's no harm in that.
Okay, and then the last question is Savvy Sliders. You also have own Happy pizzas, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a sister brand.
Sister brand, okay, thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
So again, this is just considering the zoning amendment from I-1 to B-3.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I ask that we approve, I make a motion for us to approve the rezoning request of Savvy Sliders, on behalf of the owner, Nadar Property Investment, to rezone from I-1 Industrial to B-3 General Business, as presented here tonight and as noted.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve PZR 22-0002, rezoning request of Savvy Sliders, located at 22650 West Eight Mile, to go from I-1 Industrial to B-3 General Business, as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the, through the chair, the next item would be to introduce ordinance number 1764.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1764.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to introduce ordinance 1764. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item of business is to open the public hearing regarding the special land use allowing for a drive-through with a restaurant at this location.
All right, so we will now open a public hearing for PSLU 22-0006, a special use request of Savvy Sliders to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through at the property located at 22650 West Eight Mile Road. Anyone who wishes to come forward and speak, please do so. You have three minutes. All right, seeing no one coming up, the public hearing is now closed.
Through the chair, if I can ask, Robert, could you just tell the Counsel your proposed hours of operation first before they go to questions?
Sure. Monday through Thursday, we're looking at 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Fridays and Saturdays, 7:00 to midnight, and Sundays, 11:00 to 10:00.
Would you mind just repeating that a little slower so I can get?
Sure, sorry. Monday, Monday to Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to midnight. And Sundays, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. I may be getting old in that, but where are we having a public hearing for a restaurant that's going to become a new restaurant with a drive-through?
Because the existing restaurant was non-conforming. It was a non-conforming under the I-1 district. And then it's been closed for several years. So we've just rezoned it to B-3, and the B-3 requires restaurants with drive-throughs as a special land use. Once the special land use has been granted, it runs with the land. But there was no previous special land use on the site because it was non-conforming.
How did it ever get built?
Well, again, I believe it was built many years ago and became a legal non-conforming use. Either it had some commercial zoning, was zoned I-1, or the city did not have a requirement on the books, and it could have got approved as a non-industrial use. But this goes, this goes back past our current ordinance. And as you recall, there's a number of businesses on Telegraph Road that have non-conforming use. And whenever we have a non-conformity, we like to try to bring it to conform. Many times when businesses are sold or they refinance, we get contact by the title insurance, and they ask if the zoning's in place. And if it isn't, it may hold up the sale or the refinancing of a property. So our obligation is always when we have a legal, non-conforming use, and they go through an update, we try to make it conforming. And since we're resetting everything with the new zoning, it has to go through special land use.
Hmm, is that restaurant, that old Taco Bell, doesn't look like it's that old?
I believe it was at least 20 years ago, and it's been closed for several years now.
Okay.
So it puts it in the non-conforming status.
Okay, thank you. This is my only question.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Now, this is my, I don't get out that often, and my child is too old for me to be taking them to McDonald's. So what is the Savvy Slider, where do they come from?
So we're based in Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Oh, it's a local?
It's a local franchise. We have approximately 30 locations right now, and we're beginning to grow nationally as well.
Okay, you have 30 locations in Michigan?
30 locations in Michigan and two in Ohio.
Okay. So this is probably going to carry forward. What do you anticipate your data volume and activity to be at this location? And once, if you're using the drive-through and/or if a person has come into your shop, what is the approximate time before they get served?
So we're looking at about 200 tickets a day. And that's a mix of drive-through, walk-in, as well as third-party delivery. Wait times in the drive-through is roughly about five minutes.
Okay. Okay, how old is this franchise?
Savvy Sliders is, I want to say about two and a half, three years.
Okay. And this is my last question. In the franchise world, and this is almost your opinion, you know, would you consider your growth to be substantial and sustainable? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, so I just, I just joined with Savvy Sliders maybe about four months ago. Wouldn't have came on board if I didn't think that this company was going to grow. I don't know if any of you have ever tried the food there. Gourmet Sliders, they're absolutely delicious. We're beginning to grow out of state. We have currently 15 other locations throughout Michigan and Ohio in development, as well as Houston and the Miami area. We have a combination of about six stores that are in development down there as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
So since we're on the special use request, can we add a section that recreational and medical marijuana will not be allowed at this location since it isn't a B-3 because it's near residential, as you had indicated?
I don't see, I don't see a reason why you couldn't add that as a condition, but it doesn't, doesn't apply. I don't know if the city attorney has, because it's not, it wasn't a conditional use where you can limit the uses. I don't, I'm not.
It's a B-3 use.
Right.
If for some reason, something, this restaurant is not successful, I don't, you know, I don't want someone else to come in and say, well, this was allowed from the previous owner. I'd rather be safe than sorry moving forward, if possible.
Again, I guess you can add it as a condition, and we'll verify the validity of it. It's just that the appropriate way to do it is if it was under a conditional zoning, you can limit the types of uses, but you've granted the B-3, which allows principal and special land use, but you still have to meet the sub-conditions of each of those land uses, and it doesn't meet, doesn't meet that for marijuana. If you want to put it in as a special land use requirement.
Yes, please.
If it's invalid, I guess the city attorney will determine, but it doesn't hurt to put it in right now.
Right, I understand what Planner Pro is saying, is that for the special land use, right now, they're applying for the special land use for the restaurant. And if at any time someone did try to come back and say, well, marijuana, they would have to go through the whole procedure again. So like you said, it wouldn't hurt, but they would be right back at the process of where he's at now, except he's asking for a special land use for a restaurant. So it's not going to be something that somebody could assume just because it's in B-3, because they would have to come in, and right away, they would be denied because of the proximity to the residential area.
It doesn't qualify anyway because it's too close to residential.
I just feel really strong that if my colleagues disagree, I respect. I would like the condition added, and we can say because it's too close to residential. I don't see anything wrong, but I defer to the rest of my colleagues, and I'll go along with whatever the rest of you say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to the planner. If I'm not mistaken, and it could be because the Taco Bell is closed, but right there, it's pretty dark. What's the lighting situation for right there?
So, and again, I'll let Robert speak to this, but whenever we look in an antiquated site, we want to make sure it's updated to our current standards. So photometric plan must be submitted that meets the minimum two-foot candles along, around the site. We added an extra lane, an escape lane, or an emergency lane to the drive-through that doesn't currently exist. So lighting is, lighting and safety is one of those things that are part of the site plan approval process. And I'll ask Robert to address any specifics, but I know there's some overgrown landscaping that's going to be removed to open up the site lines.
Because even with Sam's Club being right there, that access drive, that's where it's dark. Because even if you come out of that gas station, their gas station rather, and you're coming down that access drive, it's very dark there.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't light up Eight Mile or Access Drive. We cannot have any lighting go beyond our property line. So there's shielding.
Right, so.
It's going to have to.
Correct, I understand that. But what's, so I don't necessarily see any lighting other than what's going to be on your building, is that what you're saying?
No, so if you, if you go to the site, the actual site plan, I believe the existing pole lights are all shown on there. And those will be all, fixtures will be replaced, and a photometric plan will be submitted showing what the light levels are throughout the property.
So again, Councilman Hoag, this is a conceptual site plan for public viewing. But the full set of plans include photometrics, which makes sure the entire site itself is well-lit to a minimum safety standard of two-foot candles, which is a minimum for pedestrian safety. And our ordinance says that you can't have light spillage or light pollution off your site. So nothing that they're going to do on their site is going to help with the access drive, per se, other than the site itself will be well-lit. The access drive is part and parcel to the Sam's Club. So we would have to work with them to get increased lighting there.
Okay.
But that is, that is something that we review it with each site plan, is the actual lighting on site. And as I said, there's some overgrown landscaping that's going to be removed. The site will be much clearer, safer, and well-lit after all the improvements are done.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counsel, any other, any other questions on the special? Councilman Cruz?
Do you know that whether or not we have one in Southfield already? Is there one on 12 Mile and Southfield Road? Okay, that's what I thought, all right. So, and Councilman Brightwell, I've seen them everywhere. So you just got to get out of the house more.
Yep, that's true.
There's one, there's one coming up right across Northland, the street from Northland.
Oh, yeah.
On Greenfield.
Yep, it sure is.
Okay.
But yeah, I didn't have anything else. I think the lighting was the only thing I was thinking about. So I'm good, thank you.
That's why I attend the council meetings, I learn stuff.
No, you said you were retiring.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you for taking that building and refurbishing it and doing something positive with it. I think you'll do very well there. The Taco Bell did very well. And I see that you're still going to have the access from Sam's Club to your restaurant. And that was lit up then, and I think it'll be better once you remove some of those weeds and fix that all up. I think it's going to be beautiful. So I just want to say thank you, and I too have seen Savvy, it's all over on 12 and Southfield for sure, but it's partnered with Happy on that location.
We're working on another one on 12 and Northwestern, too, at the old Huntington Building.
Yeah.
Huntington Bank, so.
So there's several. So I just wanted to say thank you, and if this goes through tonight, I look forward to that area being improved. I think your business will do well there. The lighting was a concern, but we've talked that through, so I don't have to add any more questions on that. I'm just glad that, to see a good business come in.
Thank you, we're very excited to be there.
And I know that we're always happy when buildings get reused and repurposed.
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, Counsel, any further questions on the special use request? About marijuana? Yeah, why don't you make the motion, add it in?
If, as long as my colleagues aren't.
Sure, yeah.
Absolutely. I moved that the, I moved that Counsel approves this PSLU 22-0006, special use request of Savvy Sliders, to allow for a restaurant with drive-through on property located at 22650 Eight Mile Road, with an additional condition that both recreational and medical marijuana will not be allowed to be sold at this location.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve PSLU 22-0006, a special use request of Savvy Sliders, to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through and a property located at 22650 West Eight Mile Road, with an additional condition that medical and recreational marijuana will not be sold at this address, this location. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our final item through the chair is the approval of the site plan PSP 22-0010.
So Counsel, yeah, Councilwoman Banks?
I'm sorry, just one more question to the petitioner. Did you say that there was a map that you submitted that outlined where the lights were placed?
There will be with the site plan approval.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
There will be with the.
It's part of the site plan packet. The photometric plan should be part of your site plan packet, which was provided as backup material in, on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
But the, but the site plan submitted here, the SP1 sheet, shows the five existing pole lights that are currently there. So we're going to be utilizing what's there, replacing the fixture heads.
Thank you.
Do you see that in your?
I'm trying to find it right now, yeah.
So through the chair, we're making a favorable recommendation to approve PSP 22-0010, subject to the 10 conditions as listed in your packet.
Terry, do you have the, the site plan with the, with the lighting that you can provide? I'm looking through the.
I don't see it.
Yeah, I'm looking through the, what was, what was provided. So I'm looking at the additional PowerPoints, and I don't. Unless we're not, unless they're on here, which they're not labeled, which I think is what it is.
Sheet L1 has the location of the lights.
Terry, would it be in your, on your slides?
No, we don't usually put those details in the slides, but I, I'm just going through the. So the, the sheets, SP1, L1, they all show the location of the lights. And then part of the site plan package that gets sent to the clerk for signature shall include the photometric plans.
So I think the lights are just not, from what I'm looking at, I'm looking at Sheet L1. L one, I think there's lights on here, they're just not labeled.
Right, they're not labeled on the landscape plan, they're labeled on the site plan.
Part of, part of the, uh, there's, there's a symbol of the lights.
Right, okay, yeah.
And it's part of the package that is signed, part of the record will be included. But this, this should have been included.
Yeah, it was, it's just, they're not, the lights weren't not labeled.
Sometimes we'll put all the engineering plans and everything in there, but we make sure that they're in the package that is signed by council, become part of the record.
Okay. So, so just for the, for the audience listening, and if you can see the, the picture behind us, there are several lights, um, there's two on bottom of the.
Yes.
Of the property line, there's one, and there's two, there's one on the top, and then one by the entrance, the driveway that's coming from the top right corner. Um, you can see them, it looks like a little, um, almost like a, almost like a triangle. Um, so for those who are trying to look at what we're, we are looking at. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No, I was just gonna, we approve item E PSP twenty-two dash zero-zero-one-zero, site plan review request of Savvy, Savvy Sliders to convert the existing vacant restaurant to a, to a restaurant with drive-through on property located at two-two-six-five-zero, West Eight Mile.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve PSP two-two dash zero-zero-one-zero, site plan review request of Savvy Sliders to convert the existing vacant restaurant to a restaurant with a drive-through located at two-two-six-five-zero, West Eight Mile Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next, we have an ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I make a motion that we enact ordinance number one-seven-six-three, the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment to amend title, Title Five, Zoning and Planning, Chapter Forty-five, Zoning of the Code of the City of Southfield, PZTA two-two dash zero-zero-zero-four.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Cruz, to enact ordinance one-seven-six-three, a council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title Five, Zoning and Planning, Chapter Forty-five, PZTA two-two dash zero-zero-zero-four. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um, I oppose.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next we have agenda items for discussion in our action, and our first is the authorization to award a contract for construction management advisory services for a Phase One improvement plan for the municipal campus facility.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we are asking council to adopt a resolution to execute a contract for construction advisory services for the Phase One part of the municipal campus uh, facility, the Turner Construction of, of Detroit, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Um, and the amount will be charged um, to our uh, support services contractual professional account, and there'll be a corresponding use of fund balance for this. This is to proceed with the initial evaluation of doing work on our municipal campus here. Uh, council has uh, been setting aside money for the last three years to proceed with work. And uh, we had uh, five companies bid on this project. Uh, we took it down through an RFQ uh, process to two finalists, Turner Construction of Detroit and Frank Rinaldi Sons. And in your write-up, you see the scores, they write the, it was very tight um, in, in the scoring. So we're asking for council's authorization to move this item forward.
Councilman Brightwell?
What is, what is the timing on this Phase One? Start to finish, what, I see the hours allocated, what, what would be the start, finish?
The, we would have the contract in place by mid, mid-February, early March, and it would probably be March till September.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that we approve item A, which is authorization to award a contract for construction management advisory service for Phase One Improvement Plan for the municipal campus facility.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the authorization to award contract for construction management advisory services for the Phase One Improvement Plan of the municipal campus facility. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the authorization to accept Oakland County Senior Centers Matching Grant. You got deserted.
Good evening, counsel. Um, Terry Fields, Parks and Recreation, and I was about to introduce Russell Malberg, who is a Recreation Operations Manager. Apparently, he stepped out for a moment. Um, I wanted Russell to present this item because he wrote.
Here he is.
Here he is.
Grand entrance.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Uh, if you don't know me, I'm Russell Malberg, Recreation Operations Manager for the Parks and Rec Department, and uh, I'm here with good news, but I need to ask you a favor first. Um, I'm here to ask for authorization from you to accept a grant from the, uh, from Oakland County, the Senior Matching Grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Um, the program was created by Oakland County to assist senior centers, especially those that are affected most by COVID. Um, they can go towards things like capital improvements, equipment, um, technology, professional development for staff or infrastructure. And in our senior services area, it was historically out of essentially one room, Room One Twelve, as we call it. It was a place where seniors could come a few times a week and get coffee. That's where they would see our staff and get signed up for trips or um, register for classes. And that space now, with the layout of our lobby and that space in general, we needed more space for our staff to spread out and be safe. And so we have since utilized that space to its potential. But that kind of essentially got rid of what we called our senior center. And so um, when uh, when we want to be able to um, put nicer things on or do a little more, um, we need a place to expand our footprint a little bit. And the pavilion is certainly a space that we probably could all agree needs some upgrades, both cosmetically and functionally. So the project that we applied for in December um, would allow us to do that. It would be to address the walls, the movable walls in there, the thirty-foot-high movable walls. Two of them haven't worked in many, many years, I believe. Um, and so we're left with two that do function. Um, in talking with our facilities' maintenance department, the two that do work, we don't know how lo, how much longer they really will work. Um, so, you know, we haven't been able to use that space as versively as, uh, as we would like and the city would like. That space in general, if you go in there on any given day, you're probably going to see seniors. We rent it out to all types, but um, you know, private shows and, and parties and that sort of thing. But um, every day, uh, the Northland Walkers, as they call themselves, are in there in the mornings, and uh, that could be twenty a day or so. But um, it's also a gathering spot for a lot of people. It's, since we don't have that place for people to kind of gather, a lot of times they're in the pavilion now too. So um, the opportunity to close those walls or open them up, they have very different functions, but we would love to be able to do that. The carpet is very, very dated, uh, and that would be enough, the next one to address. And then if you were to look at the electrical outlets on the ground, um, most work, some don't, some have uh, um, the covers for the actual outlets themselves removed. And so we would be getting them all up to, uh, up to the same level. And then uh, finally, investing in some furniture, so it would be able to be a spot that can host people comfortably. It would look a little more modern and, and far less dated than it does, and have full functionality. Um, we've even talked into, uh, to Rhonda Terry and Human Services as it potentially being a place for COSA meetings in the future, which used to be in our senior ser, senior, our senior center. So um, when she, also when Rhonda does food drives and things like that, it could be a place to house those things in advance right now. For a lot of those, she'll house things in some of our rental rooms or the spaces we have programs. And so it would just give us a lot more space with a little more security and then privacy if needed, if there's ever, you know, some, some sort of event that requires it. Um, you know, it's a space now that does a lot of our senior things. We've had our senior appreciation night in there. We have had uh, our senior concerts, we have our walkers, like I said. Um, it's even been where we housed seniors. Uh, I think it was about two years ago, there was an apartment complex that lost power, and um, it was a senior complex that lost power. And so we had our toss bus drivers come in and bring anybody back to the pavilion to host them, since they were without air conditioning and even an elevator at that time. So it's been a place for our seniors for many different reasons, good and bad, but it's always there for them. And uh, um, according to the grant restrictions, there's rules in, uh, in terms of what kind of projects you can do, and this one fell into it. And um, it would require us to submit quarterly reports on the progress of our, our, our project, and then completion um, report as well, with all, the entire project uh, required to be done by the end of the calendar year of twenty-twenty-six. Um, and uh, I'm here on behalf of Parks and Recreation, seeking your approval to accept this grant, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, um, I just want to be clear that what you said about the grant, it's a matching grant?
That's correct, yeah.
So we have the other two-hundred-and-fifty, so.
Correct.
Match with, and where is it coming from?
That's a good question. In our grant application, uh, it is out of the general fund.
General fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
This is more to, for Mr. Zorn, and with respect to these facility, you know, facility utilization program, in this Phase One, we just approved for this construction manager. And I do know that the serious look will be looked at spatialization in this. Will this be something that your team and the, well, finance committee, we will make sure that these things are parallel, we don't spend money, or we gonna, you know, it'd be a duplication of, when you spend money, we come through and tear it down, and not a wise use of money. So this, uh, will be a parallel look at this from that point, standpoint?
The answer is yes, we'll run this on a parallel track, uh, with our construction manager, the architects, the O H M, our various teams will work with Parks and Rec, uh, the staff that handles the senior programming. But we certainly don't want to go through and do something twice. Uh, these funds will uh, be focused more on interior rooms, particular the pavilion. Uh, if you recall, the scope of the work in initial phases, the first, the city hall proper, rec building, and the muddy halls, the muddy, the muddy boots building, and the pavilion around it. Um, and the bulk of our senior programming hap, happens in Room One Twelve and in the pavilion. And there's an opportunity to do something around, some things in the interior with those dividing walls, and then that perimeter space, there's some ideas that'll be kicked around. And that's where we're incredibly fortunate with having the right design folks, creative ideas are coming about, and we'll work with our construction manager and architects to make sure that happens. We will move quickly, though, on this with the, the grant. Um, I want to compliment Parks and Rec for moving at the speed they did. This is one that, with uh, goodness, I think about a two-week window, and this is one of the challenges with these recovery dollars. Uh, good, different governmental agencies are coming out with uh, funding opportunities, and we need to be, be able to move quickly. And I think we're well-positioned. I mean, the fact that you've got this twenty-five million, five-hundred thousand set for this facility infrastructure reserves shows some of the hard work of this council, and will allow us to do some of these things.
Okay, that's, what you just said is music to my ears from a standpoint of making sure we parallel this going down the road, because this, this is a big project to redo this whole campus, and I want to be, you know, stemming, stepping over, over and putting money down, that we come back and take that money up again. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, you uh, rattle off a lot of things that you want to do with the money. Uh, will the amount of money that comes in plus what we have, will that pay for everything that you talked about?
Uh, the one thing that would be the holdup before I officially tell you yes, I think it'll be close, but the walls are tough to find a vendor for. We've got, we recently got a lead to two brands and four fairly local companies that will give us an estimate, so that'll be the first step. And it's our whole department in general, it'll be me, Terry, but also our facility supervisor, Taylor, if you've ever been lucky enough to meet her, she's gonna be the, one of the main contacts heading up the project, Angie Vergis in our senior center. So it'll be a team effort going towards that, towards this project. Um, we've gotten estimates for the carpet, it's right around sixty-five thousand dollars for, for new carpet in there. We've got, um, I, I don't think the electrical will be that high. Um, you know, it's just, we're just gonna be doing the electrical in the floor. And then furniture is kind of whatever we choose, you know, it would be something that we're eventually gonna bring forward to, to go through and purchase. The walls will be the interesting one, because it'll be the highest ticket price. So uh, we estimated uh, the total project at um, between, let me get it right, so I'm not blind to you. We'll have it. Yeah, we estimated, estimated it at four-seventy-one to, four-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand to five-eighty-seven. If it is at four-seventy-one, we do have to match, so we would just put more into, let's say, furniture or electrical or something like that. But uh, right around that five-hundred thousand dollars is what we're estimating.
Okay, so uh, I recommend that you probably should put things in priority, so that if you don't have enough money to cover everything, you at least have them, excuse me, the most important things done, and that uh, you can get a room and dustpan and sweep up the rest of the money someplace.
Yeah, yeah.
And finish it, finish the job.
Understood, yeah. That's a, that's a great idea. Yeah, the walls would be the priority, because uh, we really don't want to go forward with the project before that's done. It would make the most dust that would need to be swept up. It would uh, um, you know, and we wouldn't want to put new flooring down until that's done, because those things are, I, I, I don't even know how they get them out, they're so heavy. So it would take machinery on top of the, um, the carpet and that sort of thing. So um, if it comes down to it, we'll even rip the old carpet out ourselves to save a little bit.
A lot of times, there's a huge surprise. I know in my own house, uh, I think it's gonna cost one thing, when the technician shows up to fix it, uh, I blanch, because, you know, cost him a hundred and fifty dollars just to come out and take, tell me how much it's gonna cost.
Yes, yeah.
So uh, that, that might be something you need to concern. Second thing is, and I don't even know if there still is a Southfield A A R P, but do you host, if there is, do you host the A A R P in, in your location?
We sure do, yeah. Down in the Marcot Room, um, we ha, it's only used by A A R P for about three and a half months to do taxes. So any resident, especially seniors, can come get their taxes, their tax appointment for free at no charge. So we essentially loan the room out to the A A R P who comes and does taxes. It's blocked off from now until the end of April. Yep.
Well, I'm talking about the A A R P, Southfield Club, that meets on a regular basis.
Yes. Historically, we have had um, monthly, uh, we've given them a room monthly. Uh, they haven't been back since, but I know one of, one of our programmers, uh, who works closely with senior programs, uh, recently brought it up because they had reached out, so we'll begin, we're looking to begin that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yep.
Mr. President, I also want to just point out the role of that construction manager when making those purchasing decisions. They help guide that. Typical construction manager will have a greater database of, of resources. Councilman Brightwell, you'll recall when we had interviewed one, one of the companies across the street, when we toured that, we saw the volume, their, their purchasing volume and the depth of, of the expertise. And with the Turner, they're an outstanding firm, a lot of depth, a lot of resources. We don't buy curtain walls every, every day. Thing like carpets a little easier, but you know, the role of a construction manager is to help us get the best price and also find vendors who have materials available.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Just wanted to add that I believe that we will be successful in getting these funds as I have, I've received multiple, multiple calls, make sure you apply, make sure you apply. And these are recovery dollars that the county needs to spend. So I, I think this is very likely that we'll be successful with this grant.
We, we've been awarded the grant. So your, your words are correct.
Councilwoman Taylor?
I just have a quick question. I'm in favor of this, of course, but when you said the walls, that sounds more like facilities. Are we sure? Because I, what I'd hate is for them to come back and say the walls are, I know the carpet we can save with the walkers and all of that, but the walls?
The curtain walls?
Yeah, they're retractable. But I mean, how can we, can we truly say that that is for seniors? Because this is the senior.
In, in creating the spaces this project has put together, that's what we've submitted in the application.
Yeah, we're really expanding our footprint for sure. We right now don't have much of one outside of our existing rental rooms. And so by having this, it's such a common space for seniors in general. And with the closure of the walls, it could even be something that now hosts all of our senior drop-ins, let's say. We use a different room for that. Now, do, do others, groups use the pavilion? Undoubtedly, we'll hopefully see you all at inauguration, you know, when it's, when it's complete. We use it for things like that. We use it for our entire city staff party, right? But, um, but the, the seniors don't have a place outside of, outside of the regular rental rooms. They don't have a home, a place to be. And this would be a place on a, on an average day for them to go.
So we're going to utilize those partitions and have a room for seniors?
And, and we have the versatility to do that or to open it up when it's a bigger event or even see what options any of these companies that would install things, what we're not thinking of, maybe what can even make it more versatile beyond that.
No, I like the ingenuity. I just don't want it to, you know, come back and be taken away.
You know, I'd add, the seniors are there every single day walking. As well as the senior summit has been held in the pavilion and COSA town halls. So there, I mean, there's a direct link.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I did have a couple of questions. The, the current wall or partition, that footprint will remain the same. We're not adding additional dividers, correct?
So the outside one would be ideal still, right? Because the channels are still there and the, I would, I, I don't know this for sure, but some of the existing equipment would be able to be used. That would be one that we would, I mean, it would be nice to have it even more versatile if there is an opportunity to section it off into quarters or halves at least. Anything to increase the, the versatility of the space. It would be something that I can't answer at this time necessarily, you know, once we actually go out and, you know, get vendors in to give us an estimate or at least see the space because I think it's over 40 years old. And I would imagine whether it be technology or just, you know, increase in ingenuity over, over those years, might be able to come up with something else as well.
Okay. And then the, the electrical outlets in the floor, is the, is the floor going to have to be removed or dug up a little bit for, for wiring? Or is it strictly just the, the faceplates and outlets?
It's the faceplates and I, I've come across one or two that one of the outlets might not work within it. And so it's something that they've, facilities maintenance has already gotten some of them upgraded. You'll see some really shiny ones out there and then you'll see some withered ones, right? And so it would just be getting them all up to snuff. And in a perfect world, we would schedule it and we will schedule it to have it go in order of the most reasonable, right? And in talking with, in responding to Councilman Frazier, the walls would be first being that you're going to mess the whole place up doing, once you do that, right? And then carpet and electrical probably at the same time because once they have it ripped up, you might as well do electrical while it's already exposed and you're not messing anything else up. And then furniture can always come last. It's what completes the project.
And we have until the end of 2026 to use the funds. Do you, do you think it's going to take that long?
Technically, I would like it to take about a year. I mean, I, we would get it done as soon as we can. You know, it depends on the bidding process and it depends on, you know, the, the purchasing process internally and those sorts of things, how long it takes to procure those things for vendors. But we would want it as soon as possible because as soon as it can get done, the, the sooner that we, we can use it, utilize the space.
Okay. I know it's not part of your project, but is there any plans to upgrade the sound system in there?
There sure are. We had two vendors in two weeks ago and to give us initial prices. And we know that one of the problems is the amplifier, but we would do that. It's in our, we will be adding it to our capital improvement. We're going through our budget meetings, our initial budget meetings right now before we eventually present it to y'all. But sound system for sure.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Clearly the site will move quickly. The applications were due right before the holidays. Staff did, I think, a great job preparing us. There will be some final design elements that we'll have to, you know, bring back and, and seek input on. But if you're putting in place, you see, you've heard some of the work, Parks and Rec is done. You have a construction manager coming on place. I am certain there will be some scope work, scope creep as we finalize some of the design, but the goal was to get 100% of the grant and that's what staff was successful at. And we'll come back with the design and, and I'm very comfortable within the timeframe knowing that we're putting together the right resources with the construction manager as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Banks?
I move that council authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the acceptance of the Oakland County Senior Center matching grant of $250,000 pending review and approval of the city attorney.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the authorization to accept Oakland County Senior Center's matching grant as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, final comment on my part in this. This is a good investment in the wellness of our seniors. And I'll emphasize that word wellness.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have to amend resolution 2022 dot 34 for a price increase for D P W dump trucks. Surprise, surprise.
I know. Unfortunately, this is the new normal. On January 31st, 2022, the city council approved the purchase of two freight liners from Wolverine Truck and Equipment. Wolverine Freight Liner of Mount Clemens had told, or got back to us about a week and a half ago and said they had mistakenly not charged us the $3,800 surcharge for steel and additional parts. Therefore, we're coming back to you asking for an additional allocation of $7,600, which would be 3,800 for both trucks.
So this is the second increase? We're not having any more?
I'd like to be able to guarantee not. But then the flip side is, is, you know, they can tell us and they've got us, they can say, well, we're just going to give your truck to somebody else and we have to wait another six years.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, Councilman Brightwell?
So given, when, if this goes through, so when will we get these vehicles?
We're still about a year out.
And so anything could happen in a year. Is there anything in this contract that says no additional fees in or will, will be expected or something?
No, because it was purchased under a cooperative purchasing program, the, they did allow an out due to extraordinary circumstances. And they claim that the current supply chain is an extraordinary circumstance, allowing them to pass on relevant and justifiable.
Okay, so that's the legal, that's the legal thing that allows them to do it?
Exactly.
Okay, I know, I know we over barrel, but so I know we, I've talked about this before, but I couldn't quite remember. What would these vehicles be used for specifically? These are very expensive dump trucks.
These are going to be used in the streets and highway department. So they'll be this, they'll be the salt plowing trucks, they'll be the hauling of the dirt. They're the general utility trucks, large utility trucks for the city.
Do we have, do we have some now that are aged, are these replacing what we currently have inventory wise?
These were actually additional. We approved earlier this year two replacements. So we're actually four behind, if that's the best way to put it. But these were going to be additional to the fleet for ones we had lost previously and not returned.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I, I understand the situation. Thank you.
It's an uncomfortable, I don't like the situation, but it's, it's what life's going to be for the next couple of years.
Councilwoman Banks?
My question's been answered. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the authorization to accept, I'm sorry, the amended resolution number 2022 point 34, the price increase for D P W dump trucks as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to amend resolution number 2022 dot 34, a price increase for D P W dump trucks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have, well, you're, you have the rest of them, so go right ahead.
Yeah, the next item I have for you is authorization to purchase replacement parts and repair services for city, citywide operations, AKA rolling stock. Due to the council purchasing guidelines, we must have come to you when any purchase is above $10,000 unless you give us a blanket contract amount for certain vendors. We are asking those vendors be Jack Dunahue for the Vector and the C closed television, Tri-County International Truck, which is the heavy truck chassis used in the fire department, and life support equipment in Cummings Brideway, which manufactures and distributes parts and repair services for diesel engines used in fire apparatus and dump trucks, as well as our backup generators. Two of these are the sole suppliers and, which means there is no other vendor. The other one is the preferred supplier. Hundred and seven, or sorry, 110, 105,000 will be the annual contract for all three of these. So we will have a budget amount of 105 that if we go above in combination for the three, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but we will have to come to you for approval.
Councilman Brightwell?
It says a couple of things. What is, what is the closed circuit TV tractor?
That's our televising truck. Where we televise the sewers. If there's a problem, if there's a break, if there's a, any kind of backup, we have the ability to send a camera in and televise it, take back the tapes and review it.
Okay, so it is on a tractor?
No, it's part of the, the sewer jetter.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a tag along.
Okay, that's okay. And I talked to, to Mr. Austin earlier about this. So, but it's fine. I'm good. Thanks, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Banks?
Okay, I move that council adopt the resolution authorizing purchases and repair services for a two-year period from the vendors as outlined this evening.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve the authorization to purchase replacement parts and repair services for citywide operations as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have is authorization for the motor pool division to purchase auto parts from A W I Holdings. Again, this is similar where we need to have approval if we spend over 10,000. However, if we get the approval ahead of time, we then can just purchase from the vendor. And that vendor would be A W I Holdings Company.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Hoag?
I move that we approve the authorization for a motor pool division to purchase auto parts from A W I Holdings Companies.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the authorization for the motor pool division to purchase auto parts from A W I Holdings Company of Saginaw, Michigan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, wait, can I just ask a question, please? That, it's in here, it also says Glendale Auto Supply? Is that the same? Or I know I'm wrong.
Yes.
Yes.
So should the resolution reflect both? Or is Glendale Auto Supply A1?
I'm sorry, it should be for 25,000 for A1 and 20,000 for Glendale.
Maybe we should amend.
Do we need to amend?
So you, you, you just flipped it from what's we're, what?
I'm sorry, it's 20,000 for A1, you're correct, and 25,000 with Glendale. Thank you for picking that up.
So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to amend my motion to include Glendale.
Support.
All right, we have an amended motion from Councilwoman Hoag, supported by, yes.
I'm sorry, so are we, when is that the same thing? I believe we're supposed to reconsider.
I can't hear you.
I'm just wondering, do we need to reconsider or are we just doing a friendly amendment?
I believe it's just a friendly amendment.
Okay, so then we don't need to vote on it?
We don't need to vote?
Well, was not the intent to adopt the resolution as drafted and presented? That included both?
It was.
Yeah, it's in the base.
We'll wait for our city attorney.
I think there was just an omission in the oral.
Well, we said from A1 Holdings. So is, is A W I Holdings including Glendale? Or is that a separate company?
I just wanted to make sure both companies were included because we only mentioned one company.
No, A W I is for, that's why it confused me at first. A W I is for 20,000 and 25,000 for Glendale Auto Supply.
So we, we only really need a new motion then?
So why don't I retract my original motion and if you agree with the retraction, and then I move a new motion that we approve authorization for a motor pool division to purchase auto parts for both A W I Holdings Companies and Glendale.
Support.
So I want to just get a clarification from our, either our city clerk or our city attorney?
Bear with me, please.
Sure.
Patrick, if I understand you're right, you have a recommendation for Glendale Auto Parts for up to 25,000 and A1 Auto Truck?
For 20,000.
For 20,000.
Yes.
And then separately, there's another motion at the bottom that's the recommended recommendation?
And if I may, Mr. President? And if I may, Mr. President, if the resolution is drafted, speaks to, you know, how, that we're purchasing this through a competitive contract, as well as the allocation by departments.
Right, so my, my question, though, is the, the original motion was to, for the motor pool to purchase auto parts from AWI Holdings, which is the $20,000.
Correct, and $25,000.
Twenty-five thousand for Glendale, so we would, so from my understanding, we would just need a new motion to approve the $25,000 from Glendale. Is that, would that be correct?
I, I thought Councilwoman Hoag retracted the motion and then just included both of them in there.
We didn't?
So, this is the way I would, I would prefer to do it, and legal counsel would advise me if I'm out of perspective. Councilmember Hoag has retracted the statement and, and a friendly amendment, which means we're gonna act like it never happened. We're just ignoring that first resolution.
Do we, we have to vote on her retraction? Because we already, we already voted for it.
So, my, my understanding is in a friendly amendment that you don't have to do that. So, we're just going to say that we didn't, because the official record in the minutes will have just the one motion, and that will be the official action of the council, unless there is objection. So, if everybody agrees that we only want one motion, and it's going to reflect the two items that Patrick has presented, as presented, then we're just going to have one action.
Do we need to vote on that friendly amendment?
No. Friendly means without.
But it has, does it have to be seconded?
Does?
We're not, because we're not voting on it, okay.
We're gonna pretend it's not happened.
It hasn't happened. All right, Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, actually, to me, the cleanest way to do it is what Councilwoman, Councilwoman Banks said. We voted on one, but we didn't vote on the other one. Just have another vote. Vote for $25,000 for one, $20,000 for the other, rather than goof it all up by saying a friendly amendment, or retract, or rescind. Technically, you should rescind the motion after it's voted, and you have to be in the, in the winning side in order to ask for a rescind of a motion. But the cleanest way is as if he presented two different motions to us. One is for, or two different objects to us. One is for one company, and we voted on that. Then we can do the, the other one for the other one.
As Councilmember Frazier and Banks indicated, that would be fine.
Okay, and I think that, that makes it?
Point of information, did we vote on it, though? I thought we just moved it.
No, we, we voted, and then, and then Councilwoman Banks asked the question.
That's right.
Because I saw the other company in here.
Right, so I think, I think Councilman Frazier is correct. It's probably just easier and cleaner, so?
So, Mr. President, I will move another motion that we authorize for a motor pool division to purchase auto parts from Glendale, and I think the amount was $20,000?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
Support.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve?
Motor Pool and Parks and Rec.
Okay.
To approve, to approve the motor pools division and Parks and Rec to purchase automotive parts from Glendale Auto Supply of Farmington Hills for up to $25,000, as presented in the recommended resolution.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I do have to apologize for the city council for the misunderstanding. I misread it, and my bifocals aren't as good as my cheaters, so.
All right, Councilman Brightwell?
I'd like to ask a question of the attorney. If we go through this and we say as presented, that captures everything that was presented here, and so, would that suffice? I mean, because we're going through, and if you have, anybody able to sit down, this is what was presented. So, does, that works, right?
I think Madam Clerk would like more definition on the record for as presented, but if it's been spoken already by the presenter?
And if I may, as presented, as recommended, we go through, from agenda staff on Tuesday mornings, council presidents, Wednesday review by our finance officer of all these items. We go through a lot of pain to make sure that account numbers, the right purchasing language is right. The finance committee's held their feet to the fire on this. So, there's a lot of precision that goes in those words, and it's also meant that as the minutes are put together, where the, it makes it, the actual resolution a little easier for staff. Obviously, this body can always change or amend, and yes, administration and our, we make mistakes. But as presented, as recommended, maybe the cleaner phraseology?
Okay.
So, the chair?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that I have this clear, because on the write-up, there are two recommendations, two separate recommendations. One says Glendale Auto Supply and A1 Truck Parts of Pontiac.
Correct.
And then the other one says those same things, but it has more language and talks about a cooperative contract, and has general ledger letters in it, which is different than... Both are subsidiary, okay, I see, both are subsidiaries of AWI. So, both Glendale and A1 Auto Parts are subsidiaries of AWI?
Yeah, that's, right, I see what, so, yeah, they're, it's, they were both correct. So, if you look at the write-up, right, the, the title of the write-up says eight, you know, we're auto parts from AWI Holdings, which is what the original motion was.
Yes.
There's just two companies. One is A1, and one is Glendale.
So, the original motion is okay?
So, the original motion technically was correct. We just got into the, into the weeds a little too much.
It was okay.
So, I'm okay the way we've done it separately, and if it meets with council's approval, I will just indicate that both, in both motions, that they are subsidiaries of AWI.
I, I think that's fair.
Is that sound reasonable?
So, I'm fine, whatever, but in the future, we just say as presented. It's written down. It's right there, black and white.
And I, I usually add that in there when I'm repeating the motion.
So, it works. You know, it's in black and white, so, but we, tonight, we go with what, what we approved.
Any other questions on this?
One last thing, the support for the first motion was?
Councilman Brightwell?
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Patrick, we'll let you make it up on this one.
All right, I will go much slower. We are asking the authorization to purchase light-duty parts for the motor pool division. Motor Pool Division is requesting authorization to purchase OEM parts and services for passenger light-duty vehicles. We are using a cooperative agreement signed with the city of Grand Rapids with, at a rate of 50% off from Rower Dink of Grand Rapids, Michigan. We look to piggyback on this contract to the benefit of the reduced rate. It's recommended the city authorizes the motor pool division to purchase OEM and non-OEM parts from Rower Dink of Grand Rapids, Michigan, for up to $34,000 for a one-year period beginning January 1st, 2023, expiring December 31st, with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms for the city of Grand Rapids contractual agreement. The individual breakdown of the amounts and what funds they come for are in the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Patrick, this, the dump truck prompted this question, and, and I'm, I'm for this. This is in Grand Rapids. Will we eventually get charged for postage, handling that stuff, sending it to us?
No, because usually these parts, while the contract is signed in Grand Rapids, the location of the place is in name only. So, they often say, okay, my company is here, but we'll deliver it from a different company of which we own. So, there'll be no additional charges for shipping or delivery.
Okay, that's, that is, that, that was prompted by the dump truck?
That's a good question, yeah. We don't want to get any hidden charges, if we can avoid it.
Okay.
Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That being said, I move that we approve the authorization to purchase light-duty parts for motor pool division, for the motor pool division as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve the authorization to purchase light-duty parts for the motor pool division as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Now, we're up to the council portion, and we'll start with Councilwoman Hoag.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
I'll say something. I just want to congratulate Councilman Brightwell on the award he received this evening. He's been a tireless worker for the MLK Task Force, treasurer, and all kinds of things, and, and I think it was well deserved, so congratulations again. And I think I speak for the whole council and mayor in saying that.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Councilman Cruz stole what I was gonna say. Congratulations, Councilman Brightwell.
Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is, I have a letter at home. I didn't bring it with me tonight, but I'll make copies for the council and other members of the city staff, that the Michigan Municipal League has a subset called MBC Leo, and I'm going, I want to encourage people to join the MBC Leo. They do good work. I currently am on the, the, the foundation board, and they have openings on there that I would encourage people to get involved with, to help work with, with areas. They sort of specialize in areas that are people that are kind of overlooked, and so, I would encourage people to get involved with both the Michigan Municipal League and the foundation. Second thing is, tonight, when we discussed, one of the developers that came here that was gonna redevelop the Taco Bell on Eight Mile Road, and I know we don't have site plan committee anymore, but we didn't talk any, at all about where the, what kind of landscaping they're gonna have. Will it be in perpetuity? I guess that's a perpetuity. Also, where's the garbage can gonna be? Is it gonna be behind the gate? Those kind of things. Had we had that kind of information, I don't think as many questions would have been asked around the, around the table to find out, and then we didn't find that out anyhow, so, just a thought.
Okay, and our city planner's still here, and I believe he was taking some notes.
Pardon me?
Our city planner is still here, and I believe he was taking some notes on your comments.
That's fine.
Okay.
I was talking loud enough, so if he was in his office, I could still hear me.
All right, do you have anything further?
But we do need to know that kind of stuff in order to have the city that we're looking for.
Absolutely. Did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I just want to ask Mr. Zorn a quick question about our salt for the city, for the roads. Are we in good shape with that, you know, as, as snow is starting to come our way?
If I could turn to, I think he's left. I was in the yard last week. We were pretty, we're, the dome is full, and there's no indication that there's a shortage, and we still have quantities that we can buy if we need them. We're expecting snow Wednesday night, and so far, the, like, snowfall's been light this season.
Yeah, yes. I just, it seems like one year, it seemed like we were running low, and I just wanted to make sure we were in good shape, so, good. Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have nothing to add either. So, Mr. Mayor?
Just very quickly, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Person's comment. Can, I'd like to ask the administration to make sure that the posting for the election and the regi, the submitting of petitions is on our city cable, as well as that petitions are available in the clerk's office for a two-year term for the city clerk, and for, for, and a two-year term for city council. Thank you. And on the website.
City administrator?
I'd like to just share with the viewing audience that on Friday, the mayor, council president, and Ms. Taylor, and Ms. Banks, and myself, we, we spent an hour-plus with our new Congresswoman, Rashida Tlaib. I was incredibly pleased with the generosity of her time, and we learned quite a bit. I think it's a very exciting time to get to know someone, and we were working to teach her about Southfield, Quick Study, and I was just really impressed with the amount of time she was willing to spend with us. I, I think that's worthwhile to note. She stressed certain key words to use in applications, and one of them is wellness, and some ideas on some homeland security items that could benefit us in the public safety arena as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
I'm sorry, good evening. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I just want to correct some information that was given by a nonofficial. The deadline for petitions for the full and partial terms of the council and for the partial term of the city clerk is April 25th at 4:00 p.m. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for, for this evening before we go into closed session?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we go into closed session?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, that we go into a closed session in continuance of a performance evaluation pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, Public Act 1976, number 267. Roll call, please.
And?
And for the approval of the closed session minutes of January 9th, 2023.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoag?
Yes.
Councilmember Frazier?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandor?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will now adjourn to the other room for our closed session.